Good evening, and welcome to the September 17th City of Half Moon Bay Council Meeting. I'd like to convene our meeting, and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
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 Here. Here, thank you very much, and thank you everybody for attending. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next item, which is Proclamations and Presentations, and I believe we have none this evening, correct? Next item is Announcements of Community Activities and Community Service. So, a few things to share in that regard. So, this is just activities in the community, so to the council, if you have any other items to share that I missed, please feel free to chime in. This Saturday, as every Saturday, is the Farmer's Market, and John, those are fresh vegetables, correct?
(inaudible).
And it is a certified Farmer's Market. Also, at the Coastal Rapids, the Diary of Anne Frank is still playing. There's Network at Night this Thursday at the Ellen Joseph Gallery on Main Street. And coming up outside of the city, but still relevant to the city, Donuts with Don Horsley and Coffee with Kevin Mullen will be Friday at the Moss Beach Sheriff Substation. The 21st is Beach Cleanup Day, Coastal Cleanup Day. Taste of the Coast is Sunday, September 22nd, at Seacrest School. That supports senior coast siders. And the Coastside Garage Sale, that is cosponsored by Allied Waste and Half Moon Bay Review, and that is Saturday, the 28th, coming up. And, let's see, I think that's it. And I think everyone's aware there is some street paving going on. I call that a community activity, and you can find more information about that on the city's website.
I think the surf club's having their Saturday night at the IDS, they're having a...
A fundraiser.
...fundraiser.
Okay, great.
Luau.
Okay, so luau for the surf club at the IDS this Saturday. Excellent. Alan.
I don't know how many of you heard, but the Chamber was only able to raise roughly around $9,000 for Nights of Lights, which normally happens either at the end of November or the beginning of December, depending on Thanksgiving. They can't put it on if they don't raise enough money. I did hear from one merchant in town that was very concerned and wants to get a hold of the Chamber, so I just want to put the word out there. If, in fact, enough interest was generated and we could get enough funds, then I think the Chamber would probably be willing to put it back on the calendar, but right this minute, it's canceled.
So, in that regard, I did also make a personal donation toward Nights of Lights, and I hope, hopefully, we'll have a good community here tonight. It would be nice to see that go on. It's a great community event. Anything else? John, Marina? Yep. Okay, with that... Thank you. With that, we have... There's no closed session. City Council reports. Marina? None this evening from Councilmember Praiser. Vice Mayor Mueller?
None.
None this evening. Councilmember Patrick?
Attended the Airport Roundtable. In fact, I had to chair the meeting. We had a very long, lengthy discussion on the Woodside VOR. It appears to be, continued to be, a problem with the airlines flying lower than the 8,000 feet that they're supposed to fly at. They've been dropping down to like seven, and the noise pattern has gotten really bad over Woodside and Portola Valley. Also, Brisbane has been complaining about their noise because of the increase of Virgin Airline flights. So, we're looking at all that, but it's very interesting because the Roundtable really has no authority over flight patterns. That's all FAA, and unless FAA is willing to look at that and to change how the planes ascend and descend, there's not too much the Roundtable can do, but we continue to communicate with FAA to try and get that changed. Attended the Transportation Authority meeting. We had... We did allocate money to different highway projects again. We did finally hear that the Calera project in Pacifica did pass, their EIR did pass. Whether they continue with that project is now up to the City Council. We got an extensive report on the grade separation. There is a lot of grade separations that will and need to occur. However, we do not have enough money, so I think, right now, we're probably looking at maybe only three projects getting funded. So, those are the meetings I attended.
Thank you, Neomi. Councilmember Alafano.
Thank you. On the 10th, on a Tuesday, we put together a meeting with some of the merchants in town at Pastamoon to get their views on the Main Street Bridge project. It was very informational, and I appreciate all the people that attended, and they're sharing their views with us. On the 11th, there was a LAVCO meeting. It was my second LAVCO meeting. For those of you that don't know what it is, it's Local Agency Formation Commission, and it's intended to try and control the number of special districts and urban sprawl and so forth. What's back on the agenda, we had, LAVCO had to answer a grand jury report on the Mosquito District, which was on the agenda previously, and LAVCO made the decision to let it stand as a special district. It appears like it may be back on the agenda again to be re-looked at. On the 12th, we had a Government Affairs Committee meeting at the Chamber, and I will tell you, there used to be a little sparse in participation, but now, almost all of our representatives are sending somebody, the supervisors, our congressmen. It's really excellent, and one of the things we talked about is maybe holding some town hall meetings to discuss the Affordable Care Act, because I know there's many people that really don't understand what it means, how do they sign up, and you know, how does it affect them, especially for some of the younger people. And then, we had a second Main Street Bridge meeting, and again, at Pastamoon on Monday morning, this Monday morning, at 10:00. Again, with some new merchants there, again, a lot of shared information. We had the full staff there, Tony, Mo, and Ramsey, so we could answer technical questions about the different options. So, I think they were very helpful meetings, and again, I want to thank all those that attended.
Thank you. So, I have also just to do a report out on the meetings I attended since the last Council meeting. Give me one second, I need to find my notes here. So, along with Alan, attended several of the meetings with Main Street merchants regarding listening and getting additional input regarding the Main Street Bridge and potential repair or replacement. In addition to that, you know, like, I think like all of us on the council, a lot of one-on-one discussions on the same topic. Also, took the liberty of touring the underside of the bridge, which was pretty interesting to do. I've been working with the Sewer Authority MidCoast Subcommittee on recruiting a new General Manager for SAM. The, we have an interim General Manager in place currently, and all reports are that she is doing an excellent job. The recruiting is going, for the new full-time GM is going a little slow, unfortunately, so I will light a little fire under that topic at the next SAM meeting. The, I attended a fundraiser for the Half Moon Bay Dog Park at Smithfield, and got to spend some time with Buddy, who is Jackie Spears' dog, cool pup, and we chatted with the folks at the Dog Park about their desire for improving that facility and managing it and/or changing it going forward, and they presented a vision for the Dog Park, which made me think, wow, maybe it's time for a comprehensive plan for Smithfield overall. Although, I appreciate their initiative and their ideas, I think we need to balance them with an overall plan for that parcel. Also, with Marina, met with representatives from the Cabrillo Unified School District to discuss surplus property and the ways we can collaborate into the future, and we are continuing those discussions. There's nothing actionable, just very, very high level. And I also attended the CCAG, City County Association of Governments, of San Mateo County. That group deals with basically things that affect the quality of life in general, transportation, air quality, stormwater, recycling, land use, abandoned vehicle abatement, things like that. And three important issues came up that are worth noting. One is an El Camino Corridor project, which is basically designed to help reduce traffic on El Camino, as well as 101. So, if 101 should close, how are they going to manage traffic on El Camino? And the interesting thing there is the installation of more than 200 cameras on El Camino Real, which begs the question, what is going to happen to all that data? So, we were assured that none of that data is going to be saved or recorded, but it's digital, so I don't buy that, so I want to validate that and figure out what's going on with that, just from a privacy perspective, so I'm following up on that. There's a legislative update. There was affirmation that JPAs do not have explicit authority to, JPAs like CCAG do not have explicit authority to impose special taxes, thankfully. And the last thing we talked about was congestion management. And the thing there is, it's an overall congestion review of San Mateo County. There are, countywide, there are 16 specific intersections that are addressed, as well as myriad roadways that are addressed for congestion, and I'm initiating a discussion to look at adding one or two more congestion points on the coast side for further scrutiny, because I think if you commute or spend time on the coast, you know there are some choke points that need monitoring, and then, when those reach a critical point, there will be some mitigations regarding that congestion. And those are the meetings I attended. And with that, we'll go to a report on organizational excellence to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Qualcheck. So, as a reminder, this is our opportunity to share with you all some organizational excellence, and this is an opportunity for us to highlight some projects that take a great deal of staff time and effort, but which are not normally something that come to City Council meetings for reprovable discussion or that kind of thing. And so, it's a good chance to, first of all, thank people who have been working on projects quite diligently, who aren't normally able to participate in these processes, and we're also then to help educate you as to why things take so darn long sometimes. So, tonight, we have an opportunity to talk about software. I'm sure that's a very exciting topic, and it's, to make it even more exciting, it's about sewers and sewer software. But, we had, Colleen Haupt has been working with us on a variety of different projects on a contract basis, and she dove into this project that actually was quite difficult, and she will be able to explain what it was, why we did it, and how it was resolved. So, with that, I will turn it over to Colleen.
Hi, thank you. So, the first thing I like to do whenever I'm starting a new project is ask, what problem are we trying to solve? It's always a good place to start. So, the current system that we had was called the EDS system. It was running on an outdated platform. We had no ability to assure that it was compliant with the municipal code requirements, largely because a lot of the information wasn't available to us on the backend. It was a proprietary system. So, we didn't have the full knowledge of the data structure. We had a dependence on a single person to manage the system and provide sewer fee information to the county, and the staff supporting the process was retiring in 2013. So, those were the drivers.
And what the software does is it actually calculates the sewer service charges that go on people's tax bills.
Thank you. So, this is just a quick picture of what it was before. It was a DOS-based system running on a 32-bit platform, and our systems today are 64-bit, so it was not supportable, and we were having to run it on a remote desktop. The next slide shows the system after, and now, we have a web-based GIS system where you can click on any parcel, it'll give you the sewer information, county information, et cetera, similar to what they use in our planning and building departments today. Next slide. The solution is very easy to manage. It's very user-friendly, and it has easy search and retrieval capabilities. You can do a query, come up with some results, click on a Zoom function, and it'll take you to a deep dive to all the county-related and sewer-related information, including the water usage. The solution provider is California CAD Solutions, and they were selected largely because they were currently supporting the CCWD Springbrook application that contains all of the water usage information, and since then, the CCWD has integrated APN numbers into their system that make it much easier for us to link our data with their data to provide the information we need to provide to the assessor annually. It's a positive performance review from CCWD, and they have experience with other cities in San Mateo County. Last slide, or second to the last slide, last slide. The cost return on, or cost or return on investment. We did comparative results from EDS calculating the 2013 sewer fees, and we compared that to the new system, just to confirm that we had the calculations correct and that everything was working well on both sides. We did show that with the new system, because it deals with rounding in a much better way, we will experience a gain of up to $24,000 next year when we run this application, simply from rounding. So, that was a big discovery. We also, it provided us with some discrepancy reports that allows us to validate whether some parcels that were not being assessed that perhaps should be, so we were able to review those individually and confirm yes or no. We were also able to look for mixed-use situations where we can validate and verify that the mixed-use percentages were correct. So, the cost to implement the solution was about $18,000 plus staff and consulting time, and will achieve ROI after the first year of using the system. So, current status is that the parallel process was completed for 2013 and successful. Staff is trained, and they are actually using the tool today, not only to clean it up for next year, which we can now do all year long versus three weeks before we have to generate the assessor fees, and they're using it for other things like labels, because it works much faster and easier than the GIS system they're using today. And I'll, if you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciate the work, the effort, and particularly the results.
Thank you.
The payback is great, and the time for the payback is great, so thank you for your work there.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I just want to say thanks, because that is a great improvement from what we've been doing before, and we relied on CCWD a lot.
Yeah.
Alan.
I know sometimes people ask, gee, what goes on at City Hall? And it's amazing, once you get inside City Hall, all of the backroom work that has to happen to make everything function in a community like ours, and I know it may not sound very glamorous trying to get the right sewer fees, but it's a big deal, and if we're going to maintain our systems, that's a big part of it, is getting our reserves up so we can make sure we don't have issues. So, again, thank you, a great report.
Yeah, and I just really, I really want to emphasize the, this project actually has taken about a year, because you, there were only certain times of the year when we could run it, but now we, now it's more flexible and we can do it more frequently. And there were so many issues that she identified in that first slide that we were correcting. I just want to highlight that it was a DOS-based system. Only one person in the universe knew how to use it, and you know, there's just a lot of concern when you have things like that. So, it was, again, it was an internal project that we identified that really needed to be addressed, and that is why we do need, you know, help and contracts and that kind of thing.
Well, that's great, and it's also, the new bar has been set. This is the expectation for all future projects, and thank you. One-year payback is great. Thank you for that, it's awesome. Now, we'll move to the City Manager update.
Thank you. This evening, I want to just emphasize to everybody here and at home that we do have applications that are being accepted for the General Plan Advisory Committee. The G-PAC, as we commonly refer to it, is a group of citizens that are going to be helping the Planning Commission and City Council. Look at our General Plan Update. This is the guiding document that tells what our city is going to look like in the future. So, we really would encourage people to apply. You need to be a resident of Half Moon Bay, and there are certain categories of appointments that the council will be making. The applications are available here tonight on the table, on our website in City Hall, and they are due this Friday at 5:00 PM. So, if you have any interest, please do fill out an application so that the City Council can consider you for appointment.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'm going to open it up to public forum. So, we have a big group tonight, so I want to hear from everybody who, if you're going to want to speak, please fill out a blue card and provide that to the City Clerk, if you haven't done so already. Please silence your cellphones, and we appreciate that. And everybody will have about three minutes to chat or to speak, and let's just, again, we want to hear from everybody, let's keep it civil and clear, and go from there. So, with regard to public forum, first is Martin Anaya.
Good evening, everyone. Martin Anaya, Pacific Coast Television, your community voice, channel 27 on Comcast. Just wanted to give you a couple of brief updates, first being to introduce you to Chris Littman over here, who's the newest member of our staff and who will be serving you, we hope, very well. Let me know if you have any other comments. And in addition, also wanted to let you know that we know, we're very aware that there have been some audio issues with the live broadcasts, which are related to the head end in Redwood City at Comcast. And just for those who may not know, and those who may have experienced some of this frustration, as we have, long story short, the Comcast has been upgrading their facility for the past year, and in so doing, they've been moving things around and have, upon occasion, and unfortunately, during big meetings, they've unfortunately left the audio and sometimes the video connection unconnected. So, part of the, I mean, this is really an issue that's primarily a human error type of issue that needs to be corrected by somebody coming down and physically reconnecting something that got unconnected while they were moving things around. So, one of the things that I thought was positive was that we did get a call, just in fact today, from someone over at Comcast on their tech site, that was aware of the problem and was aware that there was a big meeting going on tonight, and there were going to be a lot of people watching at home, and so, one of the things that we're trying to do is get that handshake such that we have a point of contact and somebody who's always responsible and accountable, you know, 15 minutes or 20 minutes before a meeting so that we can make sure these things are addressed. So, I just wanted to give you that update and let you know that it is something that our end, we're working diligently with the cable operator to see to it that hopefully this does not continue to happen. Last thing, there's plenty of updates that I can give you about what we're doing, but in deference to time, I'll just say real quickly, we're very, very proud to announce a program that is basically a youth video competition called Coastide Magnified, and the idea is, is that students between the ages of 7th grade to 12th grade are encouraged to submit a video no longer than two minutes in length that really promotes the wonderful coast side that we live on and the wonderful amenities that we have here. I won't go into all the details, but we're very, very excited about this program. We think that it's going to engage a lot of kids to continue to become involved in PCT and what we're doing, and for more information, we ask the folks, go to pacificcoast.tv. Any questions about any of the updates?
From Alan. Yes, sir.
Marty, right?
Yes, sir.
Marty, is there any chance someday we might be able to get this also on satellite?
Potentially. The laws that we live under, there's a state franchising law for cable that basically is a right-of-way fee and a right-of-way imposition on the cable company that requires them to support, both in terms of paying for and in terms of provision of the signal, community broadcasting, public education, and governmental media. Because satellite is a one-to-one, meaning I put a satellite dish on my roof, and it goes to a satellite that's 20,000 miles in the sky, there is no public right-of-way that's being used, and therefore, satellite providers are not required to give any money to community media uses, and they're certainly not required to carry it, and thus far, they don't. So, there's not currently a legal provision for that. Maybe in future rewrites of the Telecommunications Act at the national level, that might come into play, but to be honest with you, I'm not holding my breath.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your attention to the issues we've been dealing with. The next speaker, forgot to put his or her name, they reside at 550 Terrace Avenue, and that person will be followed by Fred Wieland, so 550 Terrace.
That's Jerry.
And Fred will go next.
My name is Jerry Bello out of 550 Terrace Avenue. I just want to say a little about the slurring that they're doing. They're fixing Silver Highland on the streets. Now, a few years ago, they did the streets of Silver and Highland, and then they did the 600 block on Terrace Avenue from the stop sign up to the hill, but they didn't, they didn't do from the highway to the stop sign. Now, can you tell me why?
I can't, but we can take your question and follow up on that.
You can't tell me?
I personally do not know why they did not pave from the stop sign, from the road to the stop sign, but I can look into it.
You can look into it? Okay. They're going to have some other speakers probably asking you the same question. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm taking note to staff that will follow up on this, please. Next is Fred Wieland, followed by Tom Roman.
Yeah, hi, I'm Fred Wieland. Can you hear me? Okay, first time up here. My name is Fred Wieland. I live at 541 Terrace Avenue. I'm speaking about the same thing Jerry's speaking about. I built my home on Terrace Avenue in 1976, and when I moved in there, it was a town joke, because they called it hog wallow, and because, you know, people would get stuck in the mud going up the street. And my street, Terrace Avenue, is reverting back to that because of the sad state of disrepair. It didn't get worked on the last time they did Highland and Silver, and I'm just wondering, why are we being left out? When we had our streets put in, there was a bond levied against us. I paid my bond off, Bon J, it was paid for, and now, all that that was put in is just decaying very badly. There's a big hole right at 511 Terrace, and it's just getting worse every day, especially when big trucks go over it, the trucks that went over and did Highland and Silver. So, I'm just asking the City Council to please take care of our street. I work on Johnson Street, and there's less traffic on Johnston Street most of the day than there is on Terrace, because it's a thoroughfare for Silver and Highland. And when the kids used to be left off up there by their parents, we started calling it the Terrace Avenue Speed Track. So, could you please give us a hand and get us our street fixed, because it's in bad, it's in bad shape? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And after Tom is Annette Roman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Tom Roman, 417 Wave Avenue. I'm a planning commissioner, but speaking tonight as an individual. So, I'm here today to talk to you about the ordinance that was passed in 2011 to transfer liability for the sidewalks from the city to the adjacent homeowners. So, I first learned about that ordinance when my neighbor was sued, Lisa Kramer, who's here tonight, and of course, that made me immediately worried about our situation. So, I contacted our homeowners insurance company, Allstate, and talked to several agents, had them send me the language of the policy, and standing here today, I can tell you that I don't have a clear answer to the question of whether we're covered for that liability or not on our homeowners' insurance. So, we've gotten some conflicting and ambiguous answers. And of course, insurance is only part of the solution, because there's a maximum limit to the coverage, and for example, in Ms. Kramer's case, she was originally sued for a quarter of a million dollars more than the maximum coverage of her policy. So, I'm worried that there are people in town that, like me, that don't know that this ordinance was passed and don't know that they have a liability, don't know what their financial exposure is, so, you know, it, there's no upper limit to the damages awarded for a lawsuit for an injury, so people could potentially risk losing their home. So, I'm here to request a couple of things. I'd like to ask the council to consider agendizing a discussion on this and talking about possibly a program to better educate the citizens of Half Moon Bay as to what this transfer of liability means, how it impacts them, and how they can protect themselves. I'm still going to try to get an answer to the homeowners' insurance question, but again, that's only part of the answer, part of the solution. But even better, I'd like... about possibly a program to better educate the citizens of Half Moon Bay as to what this transfer of liability means, how it impacts them, and how they can protect themselves. I'm still going to try to get an answer to the homeowners' insurance question, but again, that's only part of the answer, part of the solution. But even better, I'd like consideration to be given by the council to possibly repeal of this ordinance. You know, I recognize in 2011, the city was on a less favorable financial posture, and today, not so much the case. The city's in better financial shape. And I also recognize other cities, some other cities are, you know, implementing ordinances like this. But personally, I feel like sidewalk is infrastructure, like streets and gutters and other things, and really, it seems to me like the city should own that infrastructure and maintain it and maintain liability for it and not have citizens be at risk for losing, you know, large financial sums. So, I know you can't talk about it tonight, so I'd just like to ask that you agendize it at a future meeting and discuss those two things, a program to better inform people about what their liabilities are and to possibly repeal the ordinance. Thank you.
Tom, thank you very much. So, Tom, thank you. Thank you for your service in the planning commission. And I ask everybody, please hold your applause. We have a very long list of speakers tonight. Annette Roman, please.
Hi, I'm Annette Roman. I'm -- I live at 417 Wave. I've been a property owner for 10 years. I'm here in support of my neighbor, Lisa Kramer, who was recently sued for $350,000 when someone was injured when they fell on her sidewalk. I wasn't aware of -- I wasn't aware of that. It was my responsibility to cover anybody injured. So, I'm requesting also that the city put this on their agenda. I -- most people, I don't believe, are aware, but I took some pictures, which I'll pass around, you can pass around, basically to show damaged sidewalks throughout the city. They're in different parts of the city. Most likely, the owners of those properties don't know that it's their liability. So, I've personally spoken to at least 30 residents that are not aware, and so I'll -- and so, I personally don't want the financial liability and what can I do to protect myself? And also, if I am responsible for it, I don't want anybody walking on my sidewalk. So, that's about it. I have one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Kramer, followed by Jerry Steinberg.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lisa Kramer. I bought a home at 415 Wave Avenue, and about five and a half months into owning that home, a woman tripped and fell on the sidewalk and broke her arm. And a few months after that, I got a letter from her attorney demanding $350,000 for the first surgery she'd had at Stanford University Hospital, anticipating a second surgery at Stanford University Hospital. My insurance company was truly not obligated to defend me in this situation because my policy covered my property. The sidewalk was not my property. My insurance company could have opted to not settle with her, but ended up doing that probably because I was a policyholder for years and probably because this is a murky area that a lot of insurance companies are now contending with. They, in some cases, do decide to cover the homeowner; in other cases, they do not. I did not have an umbrella policy, which is one of the primary ways people protect themselves because you're not really, again, protecting your own property. It's your property that we end up protecting with an umbrella policy. Until I was sued, or the threat of a lawsuit came about, I had no idea that an ordinance had been passed. And I don't want to blame my real estate agents because I don't think they knew either. I've talked to at least 30 residents just to find out if I'm the only sucker, and mostly, nobody knows. Only one person out of everyone I've spoken with has any idea that they're liable. This is a great danger to people because, you know, she sued me for $350,000 when that was without lost wages. If she lost wages, it could have been half a million. There's really no limit to what a person might sue for. So, I would like this to be put on the agenda. I think it should be talked about, and I think at a minimum, awareness should be raised so that homeowners can protect themselves better than I did. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your points and your input there. Jerry Steinberg, followed by Patrick Johnson.
This is about the paving or the seal and rocking of Terrace Avenue. Terrace Avenue, in particular, west of Golden Gate, requires immediate attention. Lower Terrace acts as the stem of the funnel for almost several hundred homes to reach Highway 1. It's well-understood that if street maintenance over time is properly executed, that it is less costly to chip and seal streets in fair condition than to totally replace streets in poor condition. However, engineering street maintenance many times requires individual considerations. Obviously, one solution doesn't fit all of -- all these situations. Today, in discussion with Mark Guido, the Cape Seal Project Manager, there are two locations on Lower Terrace that require patches. That means removal and replacement of the asphalt for a total of approximately 700 square feet at $6 a square foot for a total cost of $4,200. Before, it would benefit from a cap seal overall of Terrace. Now, Terrace is approximately 10,000 square yards from the highway to the end of the street, and that is about $4,000 a square foot. It would cost about $40,000. But if only the lower terrace, if only the part that's really heavily used is done, it would amount to about $20,000. Terrace was not slurry sealed approximately seven years ago, when all the other streets, as was mentioned by other speakers, were sealed. When Alianto Properties replaced and paid for the plastic lateral pipes that their contractor did a great job in replacing the subgrade and the asphalt on Lower Terrace. Alianto Properties is required, and it'll be many, many years in the future, to repair any damage to Terrace related to the construction of their project. If the street is in poor condition to start with, do they really have to do anything? Now is the time, as weather and the scheduling allows the contractor to patch and chip rock and seal the lower portion of Terrace. The approximately 4% increase in cost, say the $24,000 versus the total project of $625, it's about 4%, and that should be covered by change order contingency monies that must have been assigned. It'd be beneficial in extending the life of Terrace for the safety of all the users in the Terrace Highland-Silver subdivisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And Patrick?
Good evening, city council members and mayor. Thank you for taking time to listen. My name's Patrick Johnson, 431 Keough. Planning Commissioner speaking tonight as a resident and proud owner of 431 Keough. I was here years ago talking about the slurry coating at our neighborhood, and I -- Mr. Bello, I think, is about the time that he's referring to and all the other speakers. And I came forward to wonder, was there a system of order that you guys choose and how do you pick the criteria on what streets need to be paved? And I don't remember what the answer was, but I made it very clear that Keough was really bad off at that time, and so, let's date it back to seven years then. And there's a lot of potholes. You'll see it's all dug up, and Pillar Cidos is pretty bad, too, and you get -- it's bumpy all the way down. I would like to invite any city council member to go ahead and just drive down our street and look at that. And my concerns at that time was Silver was being paved, and it's probably been paved a few times. At the same time, we haven't been paved at all, so I'm -- and I think they're getting paved again. I'm not sure about the details. So, that was one of my issues that I wanted to talk to you about, is priority and how those get picked. The other issue that I'd like to bring up is that I was at Dr. Ma's office for some tooth cleaning that I normally do, and he was talking to me about his sidewalk being torn up and how he has to plant a tree for the planning commission, which I wasn't part of it, on his project, and to put a tree. And I guess apparently, the tree, the way the roots were suggested to do it, he wasn't informed correctly, and they now pulled up the sidewalk. So, now, he's liable for that repair that he was told to do. And so, he expresses frustration. So, I wanted to kind of bring that forward to you, and I think he sent you guys a letter. And I would like to express that, too, that I'm concerned and like to see it agendized, that that issue, that ordinance be brought forward and brought forward to the planning commission or the city council to be reevaluated. Right around Pillar Cidos, where the mailbox is, that everybody walks to, is a huge liability. And I would like to invite there again, anybody to go out and take a look at that, right around the corner from the frontage road to Keough. You'll notice it's all cracked up. It's ready for a liability. And then, on Pillar Cidos, three houses to the right of Mr. Benjamin's house is Dane Jones, an attorney, which is a really nice guy, by the way. And he has a sidewalk that's cracked really bad, where it's like you could do a skateboard jump over it. So, I'm concerned. With that being a major thoroughfare for people to go to the beach, we've got a big problem here, and it's right by the house that if you've all been to Keough and Pillar Cidos, there's two trails. There's one on the left and one on the right to gain access to the trail. That's going to lead into this next thing that I want to talk to you guys about. At the end there, I have a child that's wheelchair-bound now, which makes it really tough to go through that chair or through that walkway because of the blue posts. You cannot gain access with a wheelchair through those on the left-hand side trail. So, that's not ADA-approved, and I'd like to see something done to that if we could. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And yeah, could you clarify?
Patrick, can you clarify where the trail is?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
So, if you count from Jimmy Benjamin's house, six houses to the right, which would be where the coastal trail is?
Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll all look into that. Thank you. And with that, that's all we have for public forum. I have the consent calendar with five items. Any discussion, or any items to be pulled?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar's items 1 through 5.
Second.
Then moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our next item, item number 6, Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Replacement Design Selection.
Thank you. This evening, our city attorney, Tony Candati, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Kowalczek, members of the city council. I'd like to introduce, first of all, Ramsey Hissen and Dave Anderson from URS Corporation, the engineering consultants working on the bridge project. Also, Mo Sharma, city engineer of CSG Consultants. The item before you is the culmination of a process that actually began over three years ago, and tonight, the council will consider selecting a preferred option for repairing or replacing the Main Street Bridge. After you select the preferred option, begins the difficult process of obtaining permits and clearing regulatory hurdles in order to get authorization to build the project, and then the final design and engineering, and ultimately, at some point, hopefully, construction of the project. Purpose of tonight's meeting is, first of all, to review the available design options, receive public input, and select the preferred project option to enable us to move forward. That will give the staff and our consultants the ability to begin the environmental review process, begin to seek regulatory approval, including coastal development permits, but other regulatory hurdles as well. That will be followed by final design and engineering of the project with all of the conditions attached as we go through that regulatory process. And there's also contemplated engaging in a consultant and having a very vigorous program to try to minimize any economic impacts that might be associated with the project as we go forward. In 2009, the city received a report that it obtained periodically from Caltrans that showed that the Main Street Bridge had serious structural and functional deficiencies. Structural deficiencies, meaning that there are problems with the integrity of the structure itself, and functional deficiencies, meaning that the design is not up to current standards. The bridge, at its narrowest point, is only 22 feet wide for vehicular traffic to pass, and it also is at an awkward angle that makes turning onto the bridge for South Brown traffic somewhat precarious. And lastly, the existing pedestrian walkways on either side of the bridge do not conform to current ADA requirements. In 2010, you know, June of 2010, the city engineering firm, CSG Consultants, submitted its initial recommendations outlining options to rehabilitate or replace the bridge and recommending initially that the bridge be replaced with a new concrete span structure that would replace the existing concrete arch. Also, in 2010, the city received a Federal Highway Bridge Program Grant Award that would cover 88% of the cost of the bridge project. A caveat to that is that in order to be eligible for grant funding, the bridge program and the Caltrans standards, which administers the program, require that the functional deficiencies be eliminated. It requires that the bridge be widened to current design standards. In 2011, the city received another grant award to cover a portion of the costs of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So, all told, the city has already received grant awards that would cover 88% of the cost of the project, provided that the city meets all grant requirements, including addressing the functional deficiencies mentioned. I guess as a comment, I've heard several comments made over the course of the past several months dealing with the grant funding issue. One is the possibility of other grants that would fund the cost of rehabilitation of the bridge and wouldn't necessitate that you address the functional deficiencies. And I think it's correct that there may be other sources of grant funding out there. The difference, however, is that in this case, the city's already received a grant award to address the functional and safety deficiencies. Other grant programs are just that. The city might compete for additional grant funds, might be eligible to receive them, and might ultimately be awarded a grant if it were to pursue those. But those are, you know, the ability to do that at this point is really just speculation. We don't know if we would be eligible for other grants or if we would be successful in obtaining those. I've also heard comments about the, I guess, the notion of somehow that using this federal grant funding would be a drain on, you know, existing federal government deficit or what have you. I think it's fair to point out that when the Congress appropriates grants in this manner, they set aside a set amount of money that's available for communities to compete for. So, in other words, if Half Moon Bay does not go after this grant funding, it won't reduce the federal deficit. The result will be that some other community will use the funds for some other project. Three professional engineering firms have been involved in this process to date. First, of course, is the city engineering firm, CSG Consultants, who has prepared preliminary recommendations for the bridge project. Second is the URS Corporation. That was, after a competitive selection process, selected to actually prepare the design for the bridge once your final option is selected. And then, in preparation for the meeting that you had on April 9th, another -- And then, in preparation for the meeting that you had on April 9th, another structural engineering firm, Biggs Cardoza Associates, was engaged to perform a peer review on the engineering work that had been done to date. And they did so and presented their recommendations at the April 9th meeting. I'd like to make a brief comment about the question of whether or not to perform additional testing on the bridge at this time. The answer to that question, based on the advice we've received from our engineers, is that they have done a visual inspection of the bridge and have noted specific defects with the structure that need to be addressed through substantial rehabilitation or replacement of the bridge. And you can see a couple of those defects in the photos on the slide. And those are a separation between the wing walls, which are on both ends of the bridge, and the spandrel wall, which is the supporting structure that's above the existing concrete arch. The engineers have said they don't need to do additional physical testing in order to know that the wing walls are not just failing, but they have failed. And they need to be either substantially reinforced or replaced. Similarly, the visible cracks between the existing arch and the spandrel walls that are shown are indicative of significant structural deficiencies that need to be repaired. Now, you could do additional structural testing, and it might show that there is additional, that there are additional defects that need to be repaired. However, I would like to make a couple of comments about that. One is that, in the analysis that's before you, we have assumed that those tests would show that the bridge can be rehabilitated. And we're very confident that that would be the case. So if you go through the analysis that was contained in your staff report, if we did testing and if it confirmed what we assume about the bridge, it would not have changed the analysis or the recommendations contained in your report. And secondly, we're confident that if we do additional testing and the rehabilitation option is selected, the bridge can be rehabilitated. It might be more expensive, or it might require additional measures beyond those which have already been identified, that we know need to be performed. But it would not simply require you to demolish the bridge, in all likelihood. I would also just point out that the crack there shows visible signs of water infiltration into the existing structure, which is a serious concern as well. There's been a significant amount of public outreach on this item that has occurred over the past several months, and I think the audience turnout this evening is indicative of that. The initial report from CSG that council received in 2010 was discussed at a council meeting in July of 2010. There was media reporting of that meeting and of the bridge's need for repairs. The engineering consultant selection process involved members of the public who sat on the interview panel and who gave input and who ultimately recommended the selection of URS to do the engineering work. There were several public workshops that the council had in late 2012 and early 2013, which were very well-attended. The Option Selection Criteria Workshop that you had on April 9th of 2013 was also a very well-attended meeting. Since then, council members and staff have had numerous stakeholder meetings to discuss various aspects of the project with members of the public. We've tried to keep as much information as possible on the city's website. We've released the staff report for tonight's meeting a month in advance so that members of the public would have a full opportunity to review it and comment upon it. And I've been told that the issue has been reported upon in the news media at least 47 times over the past three years. There've been a number of bridge options evaluated over the course of the time that this project has been in the works. CSG initially prepared three options, one rehabilitation option and two options to replace the bridge. One, having that be done in a single stage where the existing bridge is demolished and a new bridge is constructed. The second would be to do a two-stage replacement, which would enable you to leave a lane of traffic open during the construction. URS proposed a number of additional options, one involving rehabilitation of the existing bridge structure, an alternative to option one presented by CSG, another involving rehabilitation, but also widening the bridge to address its functional deficiencies. And a third option was a variation on the replacement. Instead of a two-stage replacement, it was to be done in three stages with a lane being constructed on the west side first, then another on the east side, and then the middle portion being demolishing of the bridge and filling in the gaps between those two. There was two, oh, when the city engaged Biggs Cardoza Associates in April to do its peer review, then the Biggs Cardoza firm came up with another rehabilitation and safety improvement option that we'll discuss further tonight. And then, of course, there are two additional options recommended by members of the public. The first, option 5A, would take the rehabilitation component of option five, but not include the widening or safety improvements. And option six is a variation on the rehabilitation-only option, which has some differences in how the pedestrian and bicycle traffic would be dealt with. Option 5A was requested by a member of the community, Dave Cresson, and it has received favorable comments from a number of members of the local merchants that we've spoken to over the course of the past few months. At the April 9th meeting, the council was asked to basically provide its criteria for studying options to replace the bridge. And also to rank them in order of importance. And these are the five criteria that the council selected. First is protecting catastrophic bridge failure. Two is to construct the project in a manner that maintains at least one lane of traffic at most times during construction. Three, to minimize construction impacts, disruptions to those closest to the bridge. Four, to minimize fiscal impact to the city and maximize the use of grant funds. And five, the least environmental impact and the greatest probability of clearing regulatory The staff prepared an options-ranking matrix that weighted those criteria in the order of the council's priorities, and then evaluated each of the project options to determine its consistency with the council's ranked criteria. And this is the matrix. You can't read the numbers from here, but when you apply the matrix formula, this is how the options ranked, with option three, the two-stage replacement ranking number one, option five, the BCA-proposed rehabilitation and safety improvement plan, option scoring second, option two, the one-stage replacement, scoring third, option four, the three-stage replacement, scoring fourth. And then, the rehabilitation-only options scored near the bottom for two primary reasons. They all required closure of the bridge for significant periods of time, and they had the greatest fiscal impact for not being available to the use of grant funding. I've received some comments from members of the public questioning staff's assignment of scores to various options. I don't plan to debate that tonight. I think it's fair to say that the staff did a good-faith effort at applying the council's ranked criteria to the various project options and coming up with a mechanism for ranking those projects. But I certainly am not saying that's the only way you could have done it, or that reasonable people couldn't disagree on how a particular option scored when measured against those criteria. I'm going to go through a few of the options because they are the ones that have generated the most discussion or have ranked the highest on our criteria ranking system. I'm not going to go through all of the options, however. After that, the council will have an opportunity to discuss the various options, and I'm happy to discuss, or the engineers are happy to discuss, any of the options on the table. But I thought, in the interest of time, we'll focus on the ones that we've had the most questions or comments about. First is option three, the two-stage replacement. Thankfully, you can see at least the photograph portion. You can't see much of the writing on this slide, but what it shows is, on the western side of the existing bridge, that a new bridge structure would be constructed as the first phase of the project. And then the second phase of the project would be to demolish and replace the old bridge structure with a new structure. And that's the final design imprint of the option three, two-stage replacement. Some of the features of option three. It addresses the functional and structural deficiencies. It's constructed over two dry seasons, although the latest estimates indicate that if timed appropriately, it could be done in one. But we didn't want to say that in the report because it's not certain at this point. Can maintain two lanes of traffic at most times. And it has a fiscal impact, as shown. The next is option five, the BCA-proposed option. This would involve construction of a new segment of the bridge on the west side, as shown on the diagram, and then constructing the rehabilitation of the eastern portion, the existing bridge structure. It would preserve the historic character of the bridge. It would be eligible for grant funding. One of the limitations of this option, as you can see, is that it results in a finished product, especially on the north end, that's wider than necessary. And so it would give you some additional flexibility in the layout of the turn lanes in that section, but it's wider than is needed. Again, addresses structural and functional deficiencies. It will take two dry seasons, but it will maintain two lanes of traffic at most times, and the cost is comparable to option three. Option two, the one-stage replacement, is simply tearing out the existing bridge and constructing a new replacement bridge. This is the least expensive alternative, and it has also the shortest construction period from start to finish. It also provides the most design flexibility in terms of how the final product would be designed. Here's one possible configuration. Another would have a more gradual bridge turn from the south end to the north, and another is just a variation on that. The negative that has been expressed by very concerned merchants in this area in particular is that the complete closure of the bridge for at least three months and would require, basically putting up detour signs and detouring traffic from 92 down Highway 1 and then up Kelly Avenue. Or there are other access options as well. But that is a very big concern of the merchants. I think I covered these. This option is also the least expensive in terms of fiscal impact to the city. Also want to address option 5A, which is the rehabilitation-only option. This is favored by most of the downtown merchants who we've met with over the course of the past several weeks. It has some positive aspects and it has some negative as well. It will not address the functional deficiencies in the bridge and therefore does not qualify for grant funding. The option 5A would preserve the historic character of the bridge, which in one sense would eliminate one potential regulatory hurdle to the project. But it presents others that might make this option more difficult to permit.
Excuse me, Tony. Could you explain to the public what portion of the bridge is the historic portion of the bridge?
The portion of the bridge that has been identified as the historic feature is the fact that it's constructed with a reinforced concrete arch. So it's the first reinforced concrete arch bridge constructed in San Mateo County. It was built in 1900, and that is the historic feature of the bridge. My understanding is that the rails and the existing pillars and the lamps that you see on the bridge today were added relatively recently compared to the actual construction of the bridge. It's sort of ironic because there are only a few places from which you can view the arch structure. You can see it partially from the little lawn area outside of Pasta Moon, and you can also see it from the actual creek channel itself. But it's not visible driving or walking over the bridge, or from most areas around Option, I'm talking about option two consideration. That's actually option 5A consideration, but it's a typo on the screen. Option 5A would require closure for a minimum of six weeks, likely up to two months. However, there's a possibility, although not a guarantee, that that construction could be done in winter months or in the wet season. So that would have less of an impact on the summer tourist season. As you recall, the other option two could be constructed in a single season, and the three-month closure would be likely begin in April, hopefully could be done by the end of June. But it would be in the dry summer months. Total cost of this project is $1.2 to $1.6 million. $1.6 is really the more realistic number. Again, that's not grant-funded. The recommended action is that the council provide questions and comments at the outset, receive public input, and then conduct your deliberations, and at the end of that, adopt a resolution, selecting the preferred Main Street Bridge option for purposes of initiating environmental review, regulatory approval, and design. I'm happy to answer questions or respond to comments. And also, our engineering team is also available to answer any technical questions. Thank you.
Thank you to our city attorney, Tony Candati, and thank you for the engineering staff for being here and for your work on this report. Before we go to public comment, I want to ask the council if there are any clarifying questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the speakers come up, there's a couple things I would like to hear from each speaker. And it's your option if you want to answer these. But first thing I want to know was, what option are you in favor of? I'd like to be clear on what it is you're in favor of. If possible, even rank your choices maybe one through three. And once you've told us what option you like, just, I'd like to hear why you like that option. And I know a lot of you are going to be speaking for 5A. In case that's the option that's picked and we go to testing, and for whatever reason something happens and we're not able to follow through with 5A, what would your fallback be? What option would you then be most in favor of? I also like to know, as we're anticipating, if you like 5A, it could be more expensive, would you be willing to support extending Measure J to be able to help pay for that? And I really hope that everybody's going to be very civil on this and help us who are very difficult decisions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? I don't have any questions. So with that, let's go to public comment. And thank you, everybody, for attending. I don't know where you've been at all our other meetings, but they're twice a month, and hopefully you'll continue to attend. Our first speaker is Chad Hooker, followed by Richard Kirschner.
Good evening, council, and citizens of Half Moon Bay. My name is Chad Hooker. I live at 423 San Benito Street. My initial comments go more to the public attendees here tonight than to the council. I'd just like to say that many of us are disappointed with the way this process has been handled to date, and feel that maybe we want to tell the council that. But I do think that tonight, we need to move forward and move in the direction of progress on this. And I'm concerned that we could have 35 or 40 speakers get up here, voicing their dismay and distrust and scorn for the council, and talk about foregone conclusions and all the opportunities missed, and what's wrong with you guys. And I don't think that's going to get any of us anywhere. It's just going to make the meeting go until midnight. So in the spirit of moving things forward, I mean, you can say whatever you want, but I would keep that in mind for you. To council, I had quite a list of questions, a number of which were answered by Tony's initial presentation. I would like to, at some point tonight, if someone could address what the city can actually afford to spend on this, recognizing that if it's grant money, the city's responsible for 12% of the total project. If it's rehab, what is that number? What can you afford to do here without having to float a bond or do Measure J or something? Also, I'd like to know why we need to replace a 26-foot-wide bridge with a 64-foot-wide bridge. Maybe those numbers are distorted because the 24-foot-wide is the traffic way, and a 64 would have sidewalks on it as well. But still, that's quite a change. 64-foot-wide bridge that gives way to two lanes of traffic on Main Street seems a little Most importantly, I would very much like council to consider not following through on this last thing here. Pass a resolution on selecting one of these options. I would like you to keep the door open to repair and design ideas. My preference would be 5A with variations. Keep in mind that until the testing is done and the bridge is looked at more carefully, we're not really going to know the best way to do the repairs on that. There are a lot of ways to fix structural issues in concrete structures and in construction in general, but without knowing what the problems are, we don't know what those options should be. As an example of that, yet another idea that's not yet been talked about, but it's fully worthy of investigation. One speaker tonight will be Mr. Doug Adams. He's a concrete repair specialist who will roughly outline a method of repairing and consolidating existing structural concrete with grout and epoxy, so that shotcrete can be used to enhance the structure. This method is not on the bridge repair list or any of the discussions that we've talked about, but the wrong vote tonight, or a vote to move forward with a specific project tonight, could preclude that and many other possibilities from consideration. There's a lot that needs to be looked at here, not the least of which would be made clearer by initiating some testing. So I would just encourage you to keep the options open. Please don't vote tonight to close any doors. Too much remains unknown. Too many opportunities remain. I favor Option 5A with variations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chad. Next speaker is Richard, followed by Doug Adams.
Hello. My name is Richard Kirschner. I'm from Half Moon Bay. I'm a resident. And first, I want to thank the council for the time to talk to everyone. First of all, no matter what we do, if we repair or replace, it will impact the merchants downtown. And I think we need to really concentrate, no matter what we're doing, on figuring out ways to help them. Downtown is vital to the existence of this town. Then, there's also been quite a few issues or questions about why don't we do any further testing? I think the last presentation from the city council showed quite a bit that if we do further testing, I think it really won't show anything that we don't know. There are two components to the problems with the bridge, functional and structural. Functional has to do with the size of the bridge. If you notice, if you drive through the new tunnel, you'll see a lane on your right, which is a service lane. So if a car becomes disabled, if there's an accident there, you can get around. That doesn't exist on the bridge, and that's part of the deficits of the bridge. The bridge also is not ADA-approved. The bridge does not have bike lanes. Okay? There's the structural components. Now, is the bridge strong? Well, I don't really know. I drive over it just about every day, so I have faith in it. But it is getting weaker. There are cracks in the bridge. The reinforcement is metal. And anyone who has metal outside their house knows that it decays, it corrodes. This has been corroding for 113 years. When I was going through and looking at everything, I realized that 113 years ago, when the bridge was constructed, the people that took a leadership position were very courageous. They actually went and looked ahead. They cared deeply about the people they represented at the time, and they cared about the people that appear in the future, which we are. So you need to look at that. When you're making your decision, think about what is going to be your legacy. 100 years from now, will people be glad that you made your decisions? And I think that it will show that the best decision financially and everything else is to replace the bridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Doug Adams, followed by Bill Parkin.
I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay now for almost 30 years. I know quite a few people on the council, and I'd like to address the people from Half Moon Bay that are smart enough to come here and listen to what's said. I bid the work of the engineers, and we have been repairing concrete for more than three decades. I have seen what is underneath the bridge, and those photos are descriptive and obviously correct. We have repaired bridges that are worse than the one that you've seen. I'm here to extend a proponent's view for 5A, and to say that Bay City's concrete and masonry restoration would throw every bit of their experience and knowledge into hoping to develop 5A so that it would be, one, similar to what is there now; two, not as fiercely concerned about how the downtown merchants -- I don't see that we would incur such drastic measures that are described here if some of the items that I have experienced are played into the design. I have heard nothing about what would happen to the parking if you have a new bridge. I have heard nothing about what would happen if we were able to work at night rather than during the day. But I do know that I have done a great deal of night work as a convenience to the people that are residing close by. Lastly, I would like to say that we would stand ready to comply with whatever I am asked to do to assist in the development of 5A so that it does not incur difficulty to the merchants, difficult to parking, and difficult to the ingress and egress of Half Moon Bay. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. Are there any questions?
I don't have any, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill, followed by Betsy and George Del Fiero.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Parkin. I'm attorney for the Committee for Green Foothills and Carl Hoffman of Half Moon Bay Feed &amp; Fuel. I first want to say that this seems to be driven by grant money. It's in my office what we affectionately call OPM, other people's money. So we've got it. We've got to spend it or lose it. And that's not necessarily a way to make a good decision about whether or not to save a bridge, or rehabilitate a bridge, or demolish it. We should look at first what we should do as a community. The first thing we should do is rehabilitate the bridge. And I think tonight, you're going to hear, most people are going to say, we should, in some form or another, rehabilitate the bridge. And land use issues in this community can be divisive, but overwhelmingly, people support some form of rehabilitation. The alleged safety issues are overblown. Caltrans has given this bridge an 88% health index score, which means structurally, it has some integrity. It definitely has a lot of integrity. It just needs some rehabilitation. But the fact of the matter is, is the reason why it's scoring low is from the narrowness of the bridge and the curve leading into the bridge. That's not a reason to demolish a bridge. Its structural integrity is sound. It just needs a little help. The council is making a decision tonight prematurely without the benefit of SEQA review. I appreciate that your staff report was out a month early. Nonetheless, it doesn't replace SEQA review. Your agenda title is as follows. Staff recommends that the council select Option 3, two-stage replacement, and direct staff to proceed with design, environmental review, and permitting processes. Design. And when you look at the SEQA guidelines, it says, quote, "SEQA review must occur early enough in the planning process to enable environmental considerations to influence project, program, and design." So you're going to make a decision about design tonight before doing environmental review. You've already said that the grant money is what's driving this. You see the grant, and you've got to do the work. But the fact of the matter is, a SEQA should happen before you make a decision tonight. Indeed, our letter to this council, which was detailed and outlined a number of issues besides SEQA, including coastal issues and issues concerning your city code, and requiring that you preserve the historic significance of the bridge pursuant to the city code. The fact of the matter is, is our letter also outlines federal standards and how you look at, in terms of grant money and in terms of highway safety and bridge safety. And one of the things that the federal guidelines recognize is that you can take into account aesthetics and historical significance. So if the federal guidelines recognize that, why aren't we? So I beg you tonight not to pass that resolution, as the first gentleman said. It's too early in the process. You haven't done your SEQA review. You have no basis to select that decision without knowing indeed whether or not rehabilitation will work, which it will. And in some form of modernization, perhaps providing some ADA access, would probably not be objectionable, but it can be done. And so please, do not choose an option that results in demolition of the bridge. Thank you.
Betsy and George, followed by Barry McAdoo.
Good evening, council. My name is Betsy Del Fiero. I'm the owner of It's Italia, 401 Main Street. George is refraining from joining me because he has a cold, he says. From Terrace to Quixote to Jimmy Benjamin's house, it looks like there's a lot of repair, repair, to be done. Which brings me to my respectful request to you all tonight. I'd like to ask the council to extend the decision on the solution for Main Street Bridge, in the hope that you may be convinced beyond a doubt that the repair and rehabilitation of the bridge is absolutely the best and only choice. I am in favor of 5A. I think that it deserves much more deliberation, much more thorough looking at on all five of your parts. So it is my heartfelt prayer and request that you put off this final decision tonight. I feel that I not only speak for myself, obviously, and George, and our family, but I speak for 50 to 60 employees that we employ and their families that would be hugely impacted if an option like Option 3 were adopted, or any kind of road and community impediment that would be adopted when something else like 5A could be considered. And lastly, if you choose the choice of the people, you will be speaking and acting for the people. You're voted by the people, and you will be the voice that we have together. And you can have that as your legacy, no matter what happens into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Betsy. And can I ask everybody? Thank you. Please hold your applause. And George, I hope you feel better. Barry, followed by Kim Levin.
My name is Barry McAdoo. I presented Option 6 to the council, which was a very simple, in my mind, idea of saving the bridge, which I believe and know is savable, and putting bicycle and pedestrian lanes either side of it, hopefully far enough away from it or possibly removed from it, so that bicyclists or the pedestrian could see the arch of this old bridge, which was originally built as Highway 1 and is a beautiful concrete arch structure. It has its historic value and can be visible. I feel that it didn't get the -- my Option 6 didn't make the color pages, but it's in here. There's a little talk about it. But Option 6 and 5A are similar in a lot of ways. It's saving the old bridge, and it's making the pedestrian and bicycle lanes up to present-day standards. I feel that the council has been driven by the money that the 88% financing or funding gives this project, and didn't look at repairing the bridge, which will not get this funding, but there are other funds, I'm sure, available, historic and other federal funds. And you've heard people ask time and time again, save this bridge. It's worth saving. Please, save this bridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barry. So please, obliged to then no applause. Thank you. Kim, followed by -- excuse me, my glasses. Kim, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Thank you, council. I don't think there's much more that I can say that Chad Hooker, Barry, Bill, and Betsy have not said. I just have to give you -- I just have to say a couple of things, and I want to say them to you. After owning a business for 26 years, when you have to fire someone, when you have to do something that really relates to a family, I lay in bed and I think, did I gather all the information? You know? Did I see what they did wrong? Did I feel how they felt? And I lay in bed and I think about that before I make that ultimate decision. You're in charge of making the ultimate decision. And this decision is not for Pasta Moon. I'm not up here for Pasta Moon. I'm not. I'm here for the merchants of Main Street and for you, all of you, to open up your mind a little bit, not get upset about what we say or what we've showed you. Just get up in the morning and say to yourself, did I gather all that information, and then did I do the right thing? I'm in favor of 5A. I love this town. I like you, but I think you have to get up in that morning. Tomorrow morning, John, when you get up on your beautiful farm, you've got to say, all right, did I open my mind? And did I bring all this information in to make the right decision? And that's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kim. Lenny, followed by Charles Nelson.
Good evening. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. You have the letter from Whitworth and Parkin, which I think you received last Wednesday. It's a fairly long letter, but I think it has a lot of very important information, both legally and policy-wise. And so I would strongly support the comments that Bill Parkin has made and the other merchants that have spoken already. We strongly support maintaining the old bridge, repairing the old bridge, retaining the downtown character, which that bridge is so much a part of. And we hope that'll continue. And we hope that'll continue to help define the downtown for the next 100 years. Somebody mentioned the Devil's Slide Tunnel. We were, of course, very involved in that 40-year struggle to get Caltrans to not build the bypass around Devil's Slide. And the fact that there is a stopping lane, if for an emergency parking, in a bridge, in a tunnel that's almost a mile long, is a very different, in a very confined space, is a very different thing than this very short span across the creek. You do not need that kind of additional safety for that stretch. So I would urge you to get all the information that you do need in order to proceed ahead with Option 5A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charles Nelson, resident of Half Moon Bay and business owner of Tok P'unch on Main Street, Mr. Mayor, council members. I appreciate the amount of time that you've put into this, especially the time that Alan and Rick have put into meeting with the merchants. I'm here to support 5A. And frankly, I'm not sure why the city council didn't originally just ask the question, can we fix this darn thing? But you guys started in the direction of replace, and it's been replaced, replaced, replaced. And the really only viable fix-it option was provided by the public. It wasn't requested of the engineers, and it only got in at the last minute. And I think it got short shrift. I'm interested in supporting 5A because it's cheaper and it's faster. There's no closure during the dry season. All of the other options have significant closures during the dry season. That's going to be catastrophic for Main Street, either one season or two seasons. We're going to be out of business. I believe that 5A is the best chance to keep Main Street in business. In addition, we get to keep the bridge. Why we'd want a bridge any wider than 22 feet going into a street that's only 22 feet wide, I don't know. I'm concerned about the safety issue of having a wide, straightened bridge where all of the adjustments have to happen right there at Pasta Moon, where you have people crossing back and forth between Zabala and Pasta Moon. I think there are serious safety concerns with a wider, straighter bridge. I'm hoping you support 5A. I'd also like, as part of this analysis, I wish you would have tried to do a fiscal impact analysis on the larger community in addition to just the city's coffers. Thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Charles. And Charles, thank you for your involvement and your participation in all of our meetings leading up to this. I know you spent, we spent considerable time, and you and many other members of the audience did as well, so thank you for that. Dave Cresson, followed by Mark Heath.
Council members, thanks for hearing us. Dave Cresson, I'm a business guy, and I'm a history enthusiast. To Mr. Candotti's, made a couple of comments, which I'd like to appreciate, on the way that these options were rated. This is not the place for debate unless the council is taking those points very seriously, in which case I would like to represent that in some places, I forgot what the nice blight word was that Charles used, but the ratings might be slightly misrepresented on 5A. City staff recommends that city council continue in building a new federally-funded highway bridge. Citizens don't understand why a new bridge is so important. Public polls show that our neighbors are practically unanimous in wanting to keep the historic bridge. We have been told not to be emotional. We hear that this is a forum for logical, practical talk. Okay. The city spent over $1 million on outside expert structural engineers. One of them, BCA, declared that the bridge could be fixed. Good as new. Their design is much cheaper, faster, and it doesn't disrupt traffic. Accordingly, here are some answers to frequently asked questions by the community. Will the old bridge really be safe? Yes, it's easy to make it perfectly safe. Collapse? No, ready for another 75 years. Narrow bridge? Yes, but accidents on it? No one, this is probably one of the safest places in town, actually. Fender benders? Maybe. Today I looked for scratches or scars on the sidewall of the bridge. There are tire tracks near it, but no gouges, scrapes, or anything suggesting any accident since it was painted, which by the way, I think was quite some time ago. Is it really historic? Well, it is old, 113 years, and it exemplifies the earliest standard for California earthquake construction, built before the 1906 earthquake, which it readily survived, of reinforced concrete. If we demolish it, it is gone forever. What about costs? $1.5 million to fix versus $8 million for a big new one? Will streets be closed? Detours? No, versus one or two years for the new bridge? How long is the noisy construction? Two months to fix, two years to build. In 1959, Half Moon Bay became a separate incorporated city because they expected to grow, and they wanted local control. They did not want to be controlled by the outsider San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. Now, without much money, we have hired outsiders to run our town, experts and staff people who don't live in our community. We have been forced to outsource much of the city work. We have not outsourced our feelings, our heart. Most of us enjoy the little things that make our coast side what it is, our look, our history. Sometimes it is our emotions, not our rationality, that tell us the right things to do. We still have our city council. We think that our council should listen with confidence to their neighbors, to their feelings, and their facts. Please don't follow that staff recommendation. Save your bridge.
Thank you. Mark Heath, followed by Harvey Warback.
Thank you, council, for this opportunity. You represent all of us. And I've been in practice for 28 years on Main Street, 339 Main Street. And that's a great bridge. It's not necessarily a pretty bridge, but it's a, it's a great bridge to kiss on. That being said, if this bridge is savable, and I think many people think it is very savable, it would be a great, great shame to lose a historic structure such as the bridge that opens up to a beautiful historic downtown. If the bridge is savable, I urge you, 5A, it sounds like there's some other ideas that are probably great ideas. Maybe we need to hold off on a vote tonight. You guys, I know will do the right thing. I hope and pray you do the right thing, but thank you for serving our city.
Mark, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Much, much appreciated. And I do, in fact, can factually verify that the effectiveness of the bridge for kissing, but through other sources. Harvey, followed by John Ullam.
Harvey Warback, 464 Pine Avenue. I'm a director of the Coastside Fire Protection District, but I'm speaking as an individual. I'd like to draw a comparison to another local political organization, the Fire Protection District. I think you'll find it instructive. About a year ago, the majority directors of the Fire Protection District were headlong going into a very expensive, dysfunctional, crony-led system of trying to keep, or to return to a standalone fire department. The public was clearly against it. Meeting after meeting made it clear that the expensive solution that was going to benefit the existing majority was wrong. But the majority didn't do anything. And the public reacted, and an expensive, divisive recall occurred, and by a two-to-one majority, the three directors who wanted the wrong thing for the coast side, the expensive thing, were recalled. I fear, and I hope I'm wrong, that we're going into the same situation with the present council, that we are committed to using these federal funds automatically, without thinking about a better alternative, a cheaper alternative, an alternative that serves the community better, and that clearly, clearly is the desire of the public. And I fear that if the public is disregarded, the same thing that happened on the Fire Protection District is going to happen to the city council. And we must not let that happen. I urge you to select a alternative like 5A that involves refurbishing the bridge and not starting from scratch. If you need to get money, creative ways of doing it, I think, are available. But you have to be creative, and you have to do what's best for the community. Thank you.
Harvey, thank you. And Harvey, thank you very much for your service in the Fire Protection District. John Ullam, followed by George Miede.
Hello, thanks for giving me a chance to speak. My name is John Ullam, live in Half Moon Bay. You asked for our preferred options. I got one. Don't do anything. That crack that you all saw up there, that crack has been noted on every inspection report since 1999. And the same guy who has done all the inspections since 1999 recommended that that crack be repaired. Crack's still there. Bridge is still there. I was curious about our fund, your comment about federal money, federal funds, kind of curious. Does anybody know where federal money comes from? Does anybody know who's going to pay that back? Thank you. Okay. I spoke with the engineer who's been monitoring your bridge for the last 12, 13 years, and asked him, what are the risks here? And so we went over them. One was earthquake. And his opinion was that that bridge will never fail catastrophically. It's not going to drop into the stream during the middle of an earthquake while there's a bunch of little kids walking across it. He thought, I said, what about tsunami? He says, yeah, most of your town would be gone if there was a tsunami. We got to the one flood, what he called a major hydraulic event upstream of the bridge. This would be a major storm that poured into the Pilositrius watershed, topped the dam at the top of the hill, blew the dam up, all the water comes down, and that could conceivably wash the bridge out, but would not result in a catastrophic failure where anybody's life was in danger, unless they were dumb enough to stand on a bridge during a huge rainstorm with water up to five feet rushing by. Hopefully, you guys would have shut it down at that point. You would have sent someone out there to prevent that. The fourth way that the bridge could come down was a comet. Could splash into Pacific, give us an earthquake, give us a tsunami, and give us major rainstorms. He did not think that was a logical reason to replace the bridge. So you're talking about spending $8 million versus none, except maybe fix the crack, under my proposal, or about 1.2 under 5A. 5A gives you about, by your scoring system, about 85% of the value that a brand-new bridge gives us. That's assuming we stick with your evaluations of what's important, what's not. Well, you're talking about spending $8 million versus 1.5 million to get something that's maybe 10, 15% better. Very few of us would run our house that way. We would look at rehabilitation first. So I ask you tonight to have your engineers quantify the actual risk. If we build this earthquake-proof bridge or whatever, what will it stand up to versus what our current bridge stands up to? What kind of flood would take out our bridge?
George, followed by John Lynch.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Unless it's important to you, you can go before me. I love it when he talks like that. George Miede, 408 Redonda Beach Road, Half Moon Bay. First of all, good evening. With all due respect, how can anyone make an intelligent, informed decision without getting all of the information needed? What I'm having a hard time understanding is why the city won't do their due diligence on a matter as consequential as this. From the start, there has been no evidence of attempting to determine whether the current bridge is structurally sound. There has been much discussion, mostly by members of the public, but no movement by this body to perform an objective structural analysis of the existing bridge. One has to wonder why. Over 20 speakers at the April meeting expressed a strong interest in a structural evaluation of the existing bridge. Even one of your own consultants stated at that April meeting that he believed the bridge is sound and therefore fixable, but nobody will ever be sure unless the appropriate testing is done. There can be only one logical reason this council refuses to test the bridge: funding and repair. The most commonly used figure for a new bridge is approximately $8 million. California just released a study on California infrastructure projects. The study stated that California bridge projects average over 35% over budget. That would put a new bridge cost at over $10 million. A legitimate structural test would cost approximately $100,000, or 1% of that $10 million. But if that test determined the bridge's sound, thereby creating another option for consideration, where would those funds come from? There's at least one council member that has been placed in a position to acquire most, if not all, the funding needed to fix the current historic bridge through a local Main Street property owner. Why isn't that option being pursued? You say that safety is your number-one concern, yet you've not taken any measures to reduce the loads on the bridge. Seems deep down, you feel the bridge is as safe, is safe as it is. Here you sit, ready to take action on an option without all the obvious information needed. Does that really make sense? Does that serve the community you've been elected to serve? Who is really being served by making the decision without knowing whether our historic, quaint bridge is structurally sound? If the existing bridge is found structurally deficient and unsafe, replace it as soon as possible. But if it's not, please, consider fixing it as a front-running option. The only way to know is to perform an objective structural test on the existing bridge. That is the action you should take tonight. The right thing to do is to know and evaluate all your options. Please show us you're listening and do the right thing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, George. Next is John Lynch, followed by, excuse me, my glasses, Lois Kellerman.
Honorable members of the Half Moon Bay City Council, on behalf of many concerned coastside residents and visitors to our historic downtown Half Moon Bay, I present to you more than 1,400 signed petitions to save the historic Main Street Bridge. The best way to do outreach to all your constituents is not through council meetings or structured forums. The better way is go out and meet them one-on-one and talk to them about the issues. That was the method we used to get more than 1,400 signatures. We talked issues. That was the method we used to get more than 1,400 signatures. We talked to the people. There are strong feelings that the Main Street Bridge will not be replaced, but be brought up to sa-- there were rather strong feelings that the Main Street not be replaced, but brought up to safety and ADA-compatible standards. There is very, very little support for a new bridge. I hereby present to you the signed petitions and ask that they be made part of the permanent portion of this meeting.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Lois, followed by Karen Anderson.
Thanks. I thought I was taller than that. We live in a very hyperfuturistic world right now. And for me, who was gung-ho future, you know, when I was young, I've suddenly realized that we don't have to worry about it. Everybody believes there's a future. They just don't know what it is. But it's the past that's dying. It's a respect for past and several pasts. It's a respect for skill that was in the past. I honestly would trust a bridge builder who built that bridge in town, this bridge, our bridge, than I would a lot of folks who worked on the Bay Bridge. And, you know, what we need to do, the gift we need to give, is the gift to our children's children of the past, because that's what we need to preserve. It, why do people come here on weekends? Because they want to at least pretend to remember. They want to have something that fills them with a kind of gentle nostalgia. And I know, everyone says, oh, it's not a beautiful bridge. But I didn't know that, so I loved it, and I thought it was beautiful from the first time I walked over it. And notice bicyclists getting off their bicycle so they could walk over it. I, I love that bridge because of that little scoot thing, because it sure, the guys with the, you know, coming in with the red convertibles and the tops down, just suddenly get more courteous as they, as they turn around that little corner. I can imagine that horses going over that bridge weighed a lot more than our cars. And I can imagine, even if we have to go back to horses, the bridge will still be standing long, long after I'm dead. So, I urge you, and I really am so impressed with the fact that you did listen, you did hear. Who wouldn't try to bring grant money, money in to do something that we thought needed, you know, fixing? And I think you've done everything right because you brought us here today, tonight. But I, I really think that we need to restructure and shape and hold the old, because it's what gives us a real future instead of a pretend one. So, thank you.
Lois, thank you very much. Karen Anderson, followed by, sorry, Donald Sheardon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. My name is Karen Kay Anderson. I am a resident of Cuyahoga Cove. And like the honorable Mr. Warback, I am also a director of the Coastside Fire Protection District, thanks in all part to these ladies and gentlemen sitting behind me tonight. Along the lines of what my colleague brought up, I feel that the thing that most confirmed what I believed going into that very long time was the public needs to be educated, and the public needs to be listened to, and if they're told the truth, they'll make the right decision. Taking off my director hat now and speaking just as a citizen, I have had the great good fortune in my life to seemingly only live in beautiful places. I was born and raised in San Diego, and as any of you who know anything about California history know, that was the first mission built by Father Sarah on his trip north. And so there, I can't imagine really how many buildings there are, but I happen to live right next to Presidio Park for a long time in Mission Hills. And the buildings were old. They were falling apart, but they were always shorn up because we couldn't get rid of our history. I was extremely fortunate to live for 10 years on the island of Kauai, the rainiest spot on earth, where between my house and the end of the road, there were 23 one-lane bridges. And no one would have ever considered doing anything to, to tear them down and build new ones because the water came flooding through all the time. The reasons I moved to Half Moon Bay is because it was a jewel once again by the sea. And to have a town that has a Main Street, how idyllic is that? I mean, it's what everybody strives for. It's what people go to work and spend their life becoming billionaires so they can live in this kind of a place. Coming into town, that bridge is the opening to rows and rows of wonderful shops and restaurants where we make our money. Without Main Street, there's not going to be any Half Moon Bay. So, doing anything other than restoring that bridge, well, not only will we all be out of jobs, but you'll be out of jobs too, because there won't be a need for a city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your service to the community. Donald, followed by Dan Hagerty.
Donald Sheardown, Half Moon Bay. I agree with Harvey and Karen. You'll be out of a job if you don't start listening to the public of this town. You're right out of touch. 1,400 signatures Mr. Lynch got in a week. And I tell you my feelings. All over the world, there are millions and millions of bridges, millions of bridges which fall into disrepair. They get old. They don't cost eight million dollars to fix. People don't tear them down. I've cycled all over Europe. I've been over many, many bridges. And just like world aging the bridges are too, and this bridge has got a lot of life in it. There's a lot of ways to fix it. But everyone's got hungry for the big bucks. Everyone wants to get their name on this bridge. And that's where it's all at, you know? So, I suggest you get out the ego mode and stop being negligent of this bridge, because this bridge has been neglected. This bridge should have been fixed up with cracks and repairs and simple stuff that any homeowner does for a long time now, you know? And it's just, this thing's gotten absolutely absurd. It's just laughable. It's just a joke. And I'm just fed up of this town being a joke, you know? I don't know what it's like to kiss on this bridge. I've never done it. But my kid and me, we leaned over that bridge and we just spit down on the creek, you know? And we had a good time. You know, that bridge has got integrity. It's a simple little bridge with a lot of integrity. We need to get some integrity going on in this town. And it needs to start right now, right now at this meeting.
So, next we have Dan Hagerty, and is it Guy Rabbit or Guy Rabbit? Not sure after.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dan Hagerty from 154 Madrid Avenue in Al Granada. I've lived in this area for 20, almost 25 years now. And I wanted to speak in support of saving our historic Main Street Bridge, which I've crossed many times safely. I'd like to choose option six, which is not on the agenda, but first, and option 5A, second. You know, I know she's old, and she has some cracks, but I, I believe the bridge can be made beautiful and safe. I like the idea of having separate paths, paralleling, so that you can view the, showcase the, the structure, because right now you can't see it as, as well as you should be able to. Possibly even some mini, mini replicas that pedestrians could, you know, imagine just being able to stop in the middle of the pathway and look on both sides of the creek and see the bridge right there. I think that that would be a good idea. I'd like you to consider exploring that idea. I want to say that I have traveled to many historic cities in Mexico, Central, and South America, and it is clear to me from my experience that people love to go to these historic cities and see connections to their past. You know, we don't have that many historic structures here in Half Moon Bay, so, on the coast side. So, please do not destroy the jewel that we have. Let's make her beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker this evening is Guy or Guy, I'm not sure, Rabbit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council, and my friend, the citizen here of Half Moon Bay. My name is Guy Rabat from Ocean Colony. I'd like to let you know that the Main Street Bridge is, in my opinion, the heart and soul of Half Moon Bay. The scoring system is statistically insignificant, and therefore cannot be used for make a valid decision. Due to the public desire to decide, I recommend that a referendum is conducted on option 5A. Without the support of the people of Half Moon Bay, it is not my recommendation for the city council to be the only decision-maker. It must be by referendum. And I do hope that this council will listen to the people that I meet every day on the street and their strong feeling about what is going on. So, please consider 5A. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I'm going to call a short, three-minute recess for biological reasons at the request of the council, and we'll reconvene in just a couple of minutes. Thank you.